This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon, Neil. We're going to get some reverb. The time is now 7:33. 7:33 PM, this is the February 11th, 2021 work session of the Allen Dell Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference. We ask that you please mute your devices at this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There will be several opportunities for the public to be heard tonight, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, as well as a copy has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and the borough website.
Great, thank you, Michelle. Please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Homan?
Here.
Here. Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso? Councilman Strooge?
Here.
Councilwoman Wolsinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you very much, Michelle. Public comment, so this is the first of the three opportunities tonight for the public to comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please state your name and address for the record. You will have a five-minute time limit to address the governing body. Before I open up to the public, I just want to let people know that Rick Del Garcia of Associated Appraisal Group will be giving a presentation on the annual reassessment program that's currently being conducted. And that will happen during our regular session at about 8:02 or 8:03. And the Allen Dell Tax Assessor will be joining as well. So if you have questions regarding that, my recommendation and request is to hold those questions until the public comment in the regular session. With that being said, I'd like to open the meeting to the public for anyone who wishes to be heard. Not seeing anyone. We'll close the meeting to the public for that stage. We will now move to the administration part of the work session, and we'll start with the agenda review. We have a full agenda tonight. As mentioned, Rick Del Garcia will be coming to speak. Our tax assessor is also here. She will be happy to answer any questions. So we can address that part during the regular session. The minutes of the 2020 sign-die and 2021 reorganization meetings are listed for approval. All council members who were present and are eligible to vote, and we have one change to one word in the meet from Councilwoman Homan's report.
Yes.
Okay. Instead of for next year, it's this year. Okay. So it's the amendment, so it's those minutes that are up for approval with that one amendment.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you for picking it up. Ordinance 2101 regarding stormwater control. So Steve, Councilman Sasso, I know we discussed this at length, I guess it was yesterday during your committee. I don't know whether you want to speak to it at all, but I want to give you the opportunity.
Thank you, Mayor. So we did, we discussed it yesterday. The land use committee met 8 o'clock AM yesterday morning. And we did discuss this. It's kind of a pro forma thing. The ordinance is about 25 pages long. It basically mirrors what we've always done as a borough, but this codifies it and brings us in compliance with the New Jersey, actually be the DEP, I think. I don't know if Mike Reeland's on the call, if anybody has any questions, but it's pretty, it's kind of very routine and necessary. And it's a good thing. So we're looking forward to adopting it.
Great. I think you're spot on. Ray, is there anything to add to that?
No, I think it was a good summary. The state, through the administrative code, has adopted stormwater management regulations. And as Councilman Sasso mentioned, this is really the codification to make it consistent with the state regs.
Right, great. Okay, thank you.
And much of it was the same, I mean, I was reading through it. It's a lot, it is a lot of information. So this is what we have been following up till this point, but it's just a format that's more like what the state of New Jersey would like to have us implement.
Yes, agreed. And Jim, you were very helpful yesterday. Is there anything that you want to add to that?
No, but thank you for asking, Ari.
Okay, certainly. Moving on, there are 14 resolutions listed on the consent agenda for approval. 2172 is the bill list. I've reviewed it. Matt and Amy, have you had a chance?
Yes, I have.
Great, thank you. 2173 authorized shared service agreement, the designation of acting municipal court administrator for Borough of Upper Seta River. So this is a routine resolution that we do every year with Upper Seta River. In the event our respective court administrators are out and we need backup. So we thank to them for their help, and we help them and they help us. 2174, the council outstanding checks. So this resolution cancels outstanding checks for 2017, 2018, and 2019. Next is 2175, approve the municipal service agreement and settlement with the Whitney Homeowners Association. The borough and the Whitney are memorializing an agreement for snow plowing on municipal streets within that complex. Ray, do you want to add anything to that?
Just briefly, under the Municipal Services Act, a municipality is required to provide the same level of services to residents of an association as it does to single-family residences. There was an issue with respect to the Whitney in terms of back snow removal services. This is the agreement that's being approved, is the agreement that settles the issue between the borough and the Whitney for those back charges.
Great, thank you very much for that. 21-76, adopt Bergen County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. I want to thank OEM Coordinator Mike Dillon, who hit the ground running for all of his efforts to coordinate with Bergen County and our OEM team to finalize this emergency plan. I think we are honored to have Mike Dillon on here. So Officer Dillon, are you here? Do you want to speak to this, 21-76?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Bergen County Emergency Management is requesting all municipalities in the county adopt a 2020 Hazard Mitigation Plan by local resolution. Mitigation is one of the pillars of emergency management. When events can't be prevented, such as weather-related emergencies, municipalities can take action to lessen the damage once the inevitable incident occurs. Hazard mitigation plan subsequent local resolution is necessary for individual jurisdictions to be eligible for FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance. Basically, it's an assessment which identifies and prioritizes critical infrastructure projects in the borough. FEMA has approved the county plan pending our resolution. This was endeavor which began in 2019, excuse me, began in 2019 and resulted in Allen Dell OEM stakeholders identifying four projects which are deemed critical in nature, intended to be either completely or partially funded by the federal government. These projects include infrastructure hardening, flood and drainage studies, and flood reduction projects along the Allen Dell and Hojokas Brook. The countywide plan doesn't guarantee funding for these projects, but adoption of a plan is needed for local municipalities to apply for funding. County and municipal plans are revised every five years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you. Yes, thank you. And I just want to, I don't get the chance to do it very often when you're here, sometimes in your absence, but I want to thank you again, but from the heart, I mean, you had big shoes to fill with Scott Zebra, whom we lost and who was a beloved resident of Allen Dell. And you hit the ground running, and you've done a great job. It's been a difficult time, but you've rose to the challenge. So I know you're not looking for the accolades, but they're worthy and they should be given. So thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your remarks, and I look forward to continuing being part of a winning team. Thank you.
Great, thank you. 21-77 authorized contract extension for 2021 commercial grounds maintenance program for high mountain landscaping. So it's beneficial for the borough to extend the current contract with High Mountain to continue their services in 2021 rather than go out for quotes. So we're going to extend the contract. 20-71, 20-78, to endorse fiscal year 21 multi-Bergen County Community Development Block Grant Project ADA Compliant Matting System at Crestwood Lake. Amy, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. This is the CDBG. We have applied to this in the past. This is actually for our Mobi mats. So we have Mobi mats there now. We'd like to extend them. They're being used by our seniors, by our special needs population, and really from all the population. So they're a wonderful addition to the lake. We are going for a grant to extend the matting system that we have now and actually replace some of the ones that are worn and torn.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that, for that explanation. The next one, 20-79, awarded contract.
That's me, too.
Group's ready for 230 West Crescent Avenue. Amy, do you want to speak to that one as well?
Yeah, and it's 21, I keep on saying 20. We're in a new year, thankfully. 2179, we are awarding the contract to Ambience. Again, luckily, that this is the same contractor that started the remediation. So this is for the tail end of it, which will be the capping of the remediation at 230 West Crescent. And this is, needs to be done in order to close. So we are very happy that this group was awarded and that we're going to continue with finishing up the remediation. Thank you.
Great, thank you for the explanation and for all the work that you've been doing. 20-21-80, appointment of professional Coban Computer Solutions. We're happy to reappoint Coban Computer Solutions for their IT services. They do an outstanding job keeping us up and running. And nothing like COVID-19 for us to realize, for us to once again be reminded how important it is to be connected and have our computers and all that stuff. So we are happy to reappoint him, the company, and we thank you for all of his hard work. 21-81, appoint borough professional Chuck Dutozian of the firm CFT Consulting as a construction management consultant. So Amy, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. Chuck is an Allen Dell resident, and he is going to be our advocate. He is going to help us along the way, kind of look over our shoulder, and just to make sure that everything in the contract in the guaranteed maximum price is up to par, to make sure that the percentages are in line with construction contracts. We do have a good relationship with Hampshire. However, Chuck is our advocate, looking out for our best interests. He's already done some research, and he's going to be a great addition to our 220, 230 team. So we're really happy to have him on board.
Right, and I agree. Chuck has a long storied history in Allen Dell. He's done great things. I know he worked with Mayor Emeritus Spence Barra and perhaps Mayor Emeritus Liz White. And I sat with him on the planning board years ago. So he's familiar with Allen Dell. He's lived here many years. He loves the town, and I'm thrilled to have him as.
Yeah, I did forget to mention that. He was on our planning board, but he also was on the school board and was a big part of the Brookside School expansion.
Right, that's right. So happy to add him to the team. 21-82, appoint borough professional Dennis Enright of a firm NW Financial Group for a financial advisory consultant. So Liz, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. Dennis Enright of Northwest Financial. He will be tasked with providing evaluation of our water utility. And this will be helpful in creating parameters for the RFP proposal that we are looking at putting together the possibility of selling the water system. He will also, it will also provide us with the expectations through which we can evaluate potential offers for the Allen Dell system. So everybody on the Water Committee has already spent time collecting various pieces of information that we know will be necessary to allow Dennis to do an excellent job in putting together this valuation for our team and our Allen Dell Water Utility. So we're glad to have him on board.
Great, thank you. And Councilwoman Homan, don't go anywhere because I'm going to tag you in the next one as well. 21-83, appoint borough professional, Special Counsel Ryan Serbo of DeCoytis, Fitzpatrick, Cole, and Giblin. So if you'd like to speak to that one as well.
Yes. Ryan is also very experienced in working with municipalities on water and sewer arrangements. We've retained him for the primary activity of ensuring our RFP, possibly sell the Allen Dell Water System, is done in accordance with New Jersey requirements. Mr. Serbo will also be helpful as an addition to the team as we explore other options outside of selling the water system because he has worked with a lot of municipalities in private and public partnerships. And I think he's going to help us ensure that we have, you know, looked at all the options for Allen Dell. So we're excited to have him join also. So I'm hopeful both will pass this evening.
Great, thank you very much for that, for all your work and for that description.
My pleasure.
Thank you. 21-85, the last item on the consent agenda is to authorize the proposal for Civic Plus. We're excited to be authorizing Civic Plus to work with our team to redesign our website. And thank you to the Administration Committee for their support of this endeavor, and specifically to John Gill and to webmaster Tyler Yakarino for moving this forward. Much needed, certainly we've understood the importance of the website to make it user-friendly, to have people be able to do as much business as they can if they can't meet us face-to-face through the website, et cetera. Oh, yeah, I did skip one. Okay, thank you. So let me go back. 21-84, to authorize the increase of the bid threshold pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-3C. So I think every five years, the state can or does, they raise the threshold. So this year, they increased the bid threshold amount from 40,000 to 44,000. So that's 21-84, okay. And then 21-85, which is Civic Plus, which I already spoke to, so sorry for going out of order. Also, to discuss the agenda, at the end of the regular session, we'll be authorizing closed session via Resolution 21-86 to discuss attorney-client privilege update, which is update on the Water Department deliveries and negotiations and updates on personnel matters. No formal action will be taken once we return, other than to adjourn the meeting. So we've been doing this, we've done this, I think, a couple of times this year so far. So when we get to the regular session, we're not going to close it. We're going to adjourn, go into closed session. We will meet in private, and then there's no point for the public to come back to wait because when we come back, all we're going to do is open it up and close it. I just want to let you know, and I'll discuss that then. That's the agenda review. Do we have any questions about the agenda review? Nope, then let's see if we can get through some committee reports. Councilman O'Connell, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Our regular OEM meeting, we saw the COVID slowing down a little bit with the admittance into the hospitals. The CDC came out today with double masking, tried to double mask. And I know the county and the state are still working out the vaccine. So I think the best thing for everybody to do is keep an eye on our website. I'm sure the website's updated on the information we get right away. So they'll be up to date with where the vaccines are and where they're coming from. The calls so far to headquarters, we had 1,493, 911 calls, there were 196 fire department calls, there were 10, and evac calls, there were 49. Just found out that Brookside School will be closed for live instruction until February 23rd. I found that out about 10 minutes ago. Just wanted to let everyone know. And that's about it, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Councilman O'Connell, thank you very much, and thank you for all your work with public safety and with OEM. Councilman Sasso, would you like to give your report? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned earlier, I think the land use committee met yesterday at 8 AM. The stormwater ordinance was probably the highlight of it, which we've already discussed. So we checked that box already. But as we always go around the table with engineering and construction code, I'm always looking to see if there are any ordinances, any regulations that we can review and update. I mean, I consider our construction code, any ordinances related to our construction code, a living document. They should be reviewed for their relevance and timeliness. So we're always talking about that. And other than that, it was a pretty smooth meeting.
It was, yeah. Okay, great. Thank you very much, and thank you for all your work. You've done a great job. I know we added maybe one or two things to the agenda going forward. So yeah, I mean, you have a good eye for and a good sense, and we have Councilman Strooge who seconds that. So I think we have a great team there. Thank you for all your work there.
Yeah, Councilman Strooge is my historian.
That's right, that's right. Councilwoman Homan, would you like to give your report?
Sure. So the resolutions on the agenda tonight reflect some of the work done by the committee and, you know, talking and meeting and interviewing the candidates that we chose for the council to approve this evening. So I won't re-review that. We do have a March 3rd meeting set to meet with the NJDEP and many of the Northwest Bergen Water Utility persons being other elected officials. So I'm very excited about that. The agenda is still being worked out because we want to make sure that we discuss the most pertinent items to Allen Dell Water as well as the other municipal water systems in Northwest Bergen County. I've continued communication directly with other municipal water utilities so as to explore the option of sharing some services and becoming more efficient as water utilities in the future, as well as certainly to share our knowledge as we move forward in dealing with the PFAS that everybody is dealing with. In Allen Dell, our levels are low, but the levels that the NJDEP has set as a rolling annual quarterly average are also very low. So it's just important that we continue to communicate with other municipalities as well as work on moving forward what we can do with the PFAS. And as an update on the PFAS treatment upgrade at New Street, we are working on the design, permitting, and bidding RFP. It is very detailed, and Mike Reeland and the rest of the team have been excellent in working together to hopefully have this ready to go out by the end of the month. That's the goal we've set, and I'm certainly hopeful that we will be able to have that out by the end of the month. Let's see. We're going to move into closed session to speak about some of the components of the proposed RFP to sell the Allen Dell system. And I do just want to remind residents of the importance of being aware of running toilets, dripping sinks, malfunctioning sump pumps, and when we move into the warmer weather, malfunctioning lawn sprinklers. Because all of these items are the guilty parties many times when large quantities of water are metered into a residence. And when it happens, it's upsetting, obviously, because there's a large quarterly bill. And from time to time, it does happen, and residents oftentimes call and are hopeful that the Water Committee can somehow find funds to cover the water that they have metered inadvertently through their continuously running toilet or, you know, another item. And the reality is, is that the way that the water utility runs is that it is a self-funding budget. And so if we were to provide, cover somebody's, you know, their bill for a quarter on their running toilet, then basically the other residents in Allen Dell are paying for their metered water. And so we just can't do that. So really, I ask that people, you know, on a regular basis, check in their home if they can hear running water, potentially check their toilets. There are ways to easily check them to see if there is any running water when the toilet is not being flushed. So I just, you know, say that as an announcement to make sure people are aware of that. As usual, I want to thank my Water Committee because they're amazing. We do a lot of work every single week, and they've really been tremendous in putting forth the effort. So, thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of, as a member of the Water Committee, if you'd like to take a week off sometime, we would all be, we would all be open to that.
I'm going on a little vacation someday soon.
Right, but thank you for all of your work. So 7:58, so rather than try to squeeze one in there, we have two minutes. But I do want to mention, I was hoping to maybe get to my report before during the work session, but I didn't get a chance. We will have a moment of silence at the beginning of our regular session to remember retired Allen Dell Police Sergeant George Martin, who recently passed away. So in the regular session, when we get to, when we all stand to salute the flag and the Pledge of Allegiance, we will then remain standing for a moment of silence for Police Sergeant George Martin. On behalf of the Mayor and Council, we would like to send our condolences to his family and thank him for his dedicated service to our town, our borough. So thank you, everyone, for that. If you could please join me in that. And 7:58, I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved.
Great. Second?
Homan.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, everyone stay put. We'll be back in 55 seconds. We're good, okay. Everyone, welcome back. It is 8 PM, and this is the February 11th, 2021 regular session of the Allen Dell Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us via video and teleconference. At this time, I ask the public to please mute their devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There will be two opportunities during this meeting for the public to speak. We will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, as well as a copy has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great, thank you very much. So if we can all please rise to salute the flag, and as indicated, we will then remain standing for a moment of silence for retired Sergeant George Martin.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that, and again, our condolences to Sergeant Martin's family. Everyone's okay? Okay.
Yeah.
Please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Homan?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strooge?
Here.
And Councilwoman Wolsinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein?
And Mayor Bernstein?
Here. Thank you very much. Approval of minutes, I would request a motion to approve the following minutes. January 7, 2021, signed, dyed minutes as amended and the January 7, 2021, reorganization minutes. Some move, Strauss. Thank you, Jim. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Matt. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole? I'm sorry, Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strauss?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wolcinski?
Yes.
Great. Next, we have a presentation from Rick Del Garcia of Associated Appraisal Group to present tonight to speak on the Borough's Reassessment Program. This was something that the Administration, Finance, and HR Committee had been discussing for off and on for several months, for the past two years, strongly recommended to us by our tax assessor, our CFO, Director of Operations. And the rollout is taking place now. There've been, it hasn't been the best rollout, which we apologize for, but we want to. Our tax assessor, Angela Matisse, sent out a letter yesterday, which hoped to provide some clarification to the process. And we had concerns about COVID, et cetera, which I think we will all, Rick Del Garcia will speak to about interior and exterior inspections, et cetera. So I want to turn it over to the professionals. Rick, I want to thank you for appearing. I want to thank you for answering our questions the last couple of days. You've been a little bit on the hot seat. And thank you for being so forthright. And I want to turn it over to you and see whether or not you can speak to what we're doing, how we're doing it, and and why it's beneficial. It's muted, though. Rick? Okay, great. Are you there?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. So as you all know, we are closing, in the closing weeks of the reassessment process, which we started last year. And we started this process, revaluation process, because Angela, the tax assessor, and I were analyzing the trend of sales over the last, in market data over the last several years. And we realized it had been at least five years, more than five years, since any action was taken to bring the assessments to market value. And quite frankly, a lot has happened in the real estate market, especially in the last lead-up couple of years. So it was a determination made by by the assessor and confirmed by myself that the assessments were starting to move in different directions from one another, which essentially would would, what that means is it it breaks the uniformity of assessed valuation throughout town between commercials and residential's within the commercial market, the condominiums versus the single-family, industrial versus the retail versus the office. Things were starting to move in different directions. And what that means is some people, some taxpayers are are paying their fair share, others are not. Some are under assessed, some are over assessed. And quite frankly, because of the diversity of the market in Allendale, it's really something that that should be looked at and should be analyzed much more frequently than just every five to 10 years or so. You're not alone. The rest of the municipalities in Bergen County are seeing the exact same market forces at play. But we thought that it was wise to begin this process now because while I understand that we are in the middle of a global pandemic, the global pandemic itself is actually having a reaction on the market in Allendale as well. It's having a negative on some properties, commercial properties in particular, and it's having a positive on other properties, single-family residential properties. So as we see these two, as we see these two property types move in different directions, it's only going to get worse as the years go on. And so we need to stay ahead. The assessor and I determined that we need to stay ahead of the curve here. We need to address this immediately, otherwise the town, the borough could be in in financial hardship, specifically with tax appeals that are filed. Make no mistake, there are, there are tax attorneys out there that are scouring through the borough, looking for opportunities to file appeals, looking for high exposure cases to file appeals. They're looking right now as we speak and if we don't catch it first, they certainly will catch it and it'll come through as as a tax appeal, which all of you know is a financial killer for a municipality because essentially the municipality gives back 100% of the refunded tax dollars, not the school, not the county, but the borough. So we've had this discussion and we gave a presentation to the Finance Committee, I believe, about a year ago. And it was wisely determined that this, while there is a pandemic, the pandemic at play, I think, makes it even more important to to stay ahead of of this rather than react a year or two down the road when it could quite possibly be too late. And also create a, an environment where when we do fix the situation, there's going to be dramatic changes to people's property taxes. So we, as I said, we started the process last year, early fall. And as you spoke to Mayor, there have been some issues with our, the means by which we communicated the inspection process. And I take responsibility for that. That's, that was a strategy that we talked about in light of COVID. Our strategy as far as inspecting the properties was to, while we have to do these inspections, we wanted to try to do these inspections in a manner which was safe for both my inspectors and the residents, the homeowners in particular. And so we implemented a strategy where we were going to essentially canvas the borough and do exteriors, but all the while knowing that we still needed to get into the houses. New Jersey, the Division of Taxation Local Property, local property tax requires that we do both an exterior and interior. So we couldn't just do exterior only. We had to do the interiors as well. And so again, that was what was miscommunicated and that the initial letter that we sent out spoke about starting the process initially with the exterior and then working back into the interiors at a later date, either by physical inspection or a virtual inspection, Zoom, Face, FaceTime, there's various tools where it could be done. And so again, the initial letter went out speaking to the exterior on the first pass. We'll be in touch on the interior. We did leave a card and the card, again, that we left has been received as being somewhat confusing as well in that we did put information on the card and we did ask you to call the office. There have been some accounts of of some of our field inspectors miscommunicating as to whether or not they need to get in to the houses. I had hoped that the field inspectors would have explained the process as I'm explaining it now, where initially we need to do the exterior, but we do need to come back inside physically or virtually to do the interior. That seemed to have been lost, I think, in certain cases, as well as my office. I think my office probably was miscommunicating the process in terms of the interior inspections. So when the first pass in town was completed and the valuation process started between the assessor and I, we realized that we didn't get into as many homes, either physically or virtually, as we would have liked to have. And so we made a decision that we were going to send a third notification out, which again, asked people to give us a call where we might be able to obtain access to the interior. Now, keep in mind, gaining access to the interior, it's it's beneficial across the board. It can be beneficial to homeowners, it's beneficial to us, it just makes for a a better valuation. And we're continuing that process, process now. Again, that was probably miscommunicated or misinterpreted, the letter, and it did cause some confusion. And we are, you know, we're trying to work through that now. We've been fielding a lot of phone calls with a lot of different people asking questions about, well, you know, why didn't they come in the first time? You know, the person said we didn't have to. And we're working through that now and Mayor, we're going to continue to work through that throughout this year because, as you know, this program that we're doing is an annual reassessment program, which I can speak to as well, which has tremendous benefits in that you're following the market each and every year. It's at a much lower cost to the borough. By doing this every year, you can literally avoid ever doing a revaluation again. And as you know, revaluations are very costly, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to do a revaluation. And in in Bergen County, revaluations are ordered frequently by the County Board of Taxation. So this is something that is common, whether you voluntarily do it or you delay it. So because we're doing this each and every year, we're going to continue to work with the residents throughout this year. And we're going to try to get into homes that we didn't get into last fall throughout the year. My hope is that by the summertime, when we really start, you know, hitting the, hitting the borough again with with inspections, things will be a lot different than they are today. I'm hoping that this summer, COVID will be much less of a safety risk than it is today and that we can move forward with these interior inspections, which we ultimately have to get into and and get the information correct. Now, in the meantime, over the course of probably within the next three weeks, we're going to be sending out our valuation that we placed on on the homes, on the commercials, industrials, et cetera. What we decided to do is that we were going to put the information about your home on the reverse side of the valuation letter. So you'll get a letter from our firm stating the value that we arrived at as of October 1, 2020. And there'll be a number you could call, there'll be a website address that you can go on to look up all the information that we collected relative to the sales that took place, assessments that went out. There'll be a tax impact calculator. You can see the effect this will have on on taxes. You can see all all the assessments throughout the borough, as well as on the reverse of this letter, seeing the specific objective data that we picked up on your property. The number of bathrooms, the number of bedrooms, the size of your dwelling, basement, finished basement, kitchen, et cetera. If there's any issues whatsoever, we encourage people to call our office. We'll have a one-on-one telephone conference or Zoom conference. We'll go over all the information. We can exchange information back and forth via email. We've been doing this in other other towns and it's it's been working great. I encourage everybody to call. We're prepared to have a one-on-one conversation with the entire borough. If there are some issues with the objective data, we can talk about inspection at that time. And I I expect that to be the case. And we'll keep a field inspector, too, in the borough over the course of the next month. And quite frankly, there'll be inspectors in the borough throughout the year as well, moving forward. So again, Mayor, as far as the miscommunication of the the letters that went out, I, you know, I do apologize with that. And I have to be honest, I've been, I've been doing revaluations and reassessments for 30 years. And I probably have, you know, 200 or 300 revaluations from the assessments that I've done. But this is the first time I've done one in in the middle of a global pandemic. So I think some mistakes were made, but hopefully going forward, we can, we can clear it, clear the air and we can clear up the confusion.
Great. And Rick, and thank you. And thank you for going through that. I I do have some questions that I do want to pose to you. And Angela, you're here and I I don't know whether I want to give you the opportunity, if you want to speak now, you can speak. Or if you just want to help in answer so some of the questions. So Angela, if you wanted to, I, if you wanted to speak now, I'd let you. Otherwise, if you want to participate in helping to answer some of the questions, that's fine as well.
I can answer questions. I mean, I think that going forward should be much easier. I have been in communication with Rick multiple times a day in the past few days. The phone calls that I have been receiving for the past two or three days, people have been very understanding and I hope after we do our final review, to get the final numbers out within, I'd say, the next two or three weeks. And then we do welcome the one-on-one review with the homeowners, the property owners, to ensure that their values are at true market value.
Good. Okay. And so thank you. And and thank you to both of you for being so responsive when Amy, Matt, and I had questions in the last couple of days and and you were very helpful. I do have some questions to you. I know when we open up to the public, there may be some questions there. But to those that have said, hey, now's not, and now's not a good time to do an assessment because, you know, the properties are out of whack or the properties, you know, this is going to, this is a spike. And we've had this conversation, but for the benefit of of everyone else, respond to that as to whether this is a good time, a bad time, as as to the argument that there's a spike in the market and now is not a good time for a snapshot.
Rick, do you want to answer that or?
Sure, I can answer that. So so when people talk about a spike, they're they're talking about a spike to the residential properties. They're certainly not talking about a spike to the commercial properties. You know, we, it is our responsibility to make sure that all properties, residential and commercial, are are fairly assessed. And we did see a spike particularly in the months of July and August and September of sales. And we are most definitely taking that into consideration. Remember, our assessing date is October 1, 2020, and we put emphasis on on one year of sales data, which takes us back to October 1, 2019. And so, you know, we are going to look very carefully at some of the sales that did take place in July, August, and September and kind of weight that against November, December, January, February of last year. Remember that that was pre-COVID. And we can certainly say that while one might say it's anomaly, I mean, the trend is certainly continuing. Five months now after the October 1 date. And talking with Angela, she's seeing sales come across her desk and 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 the sales are there. And if, let's just say, Mayor, that if this is a normal spike, all the, all the more reason why doing this each and every year is a smart idea. Because you can certainly react to that going forward.
Yeah. And and so so that's the point that that I want to, that I just want, I don't, I want to highlight or underscore, right? That it's not a one and done, which the the revaluation or the the prior process. This is, there is a reva, it's revalued every year. every year. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right.
Yes, the number, the numbers will be adjusted each year going forward. And I just want to reiterate that we have seen a disparity between the different classifications of property, specifically industrial, commercial, retail. And the benefit far outweighed any negative going forward.
Right. And so if there is a trend, and so if residential, if center of hall colonials are selling like hotcakes now, and they're, and they're selling at top dollar, but then next year they are not, it will readjust. Next year will reflect whatever the picture is next year.
That's correct. Yes.
All right. So as far as-
One quick point, Mayor, in that if, if this trend does continue over the next year or two or three, okay, these, these, the, the separation of, of, of assessment between classes that Angela talked about, we, we call them shifts in value. If this does continue, they're going to grow larger and larger. And then ultimately, the Burton County Board of Taxation will order when they see that. And if we were to just wait it out two or three years while we watch these shifts grow, then the town gets ordered by doing a revaluation at that time, would be shocking to, to the taxpayers of the borough.
Right. Right.
Additionally, the exposure of the tax appeal would, could also be catastrophic on some of the commercial properties.
Yeah. And I'd like you to speak to that, because I know we've had this conversation. And as members of the Finance Committee know, where Alyssa has, you know, scratched her head, you know, with a perplexed, of concern that subject to a big commercial tax appeal that two, three years from now could be a number which we may not have the wherewithal to satisfy. We, even in worst case, could have to, you know, would have to, would have to search for the money to pay. So the tax appeals are not just paying back what was due and owing. The tax appeals are, can be financially harmful to the borough, right? The, the cost of the tax appeals. And this was to attempt to avoid putting ourselves in a position where there'd be greater exposure for tax appeals. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's, that's correct. For being proactive.
Okay. And then I want to just drill down to the process, because I know there, some of the confusion was an inspection of the interior or the exterior. And I think one of the, one of the letters where it made it appear as though every house needed, the interior needed to be inspected. And we have since, either we've corrected or rectified what the plan is, or we've altered it. That's not the plan, right? I mean, we're, the 100% of the exterior of the buildings have been inspected, but we're breaking up the interior over the four years, the interior inspections over the four years. Can either of you speak to, to that? So was people have questions, do I need to get my house inspected on the inside? I'm away, I'm not here. I can't do it in this short period of time. And we've tried to allay or sway some of those concerns and stagger it over the four years. Can someone, can either of you speak to that?
Yes, yes. So, so the, it's important to understand, and Angela spoke to each and every year, 100% of the properties will be valued, will have a new market analysis done for assessment purposes. Okay. And based on current market data that comes in. Okay. So aside to that, the inspections, which gathers the data, 25% of the borough needs to be inspected each year over a four-year period, only once, so that over that four-year period, every property has been inspected inside and out only one time. Okay? And that's at the direction of the Division of Taxation. They require, they require that at least over a four-year period, every property must be inspected outside and inside. Okay? So we've started that process. And Angela and I are going to continue to, to do interior inspections for those who call and those who want an inspection, or if we, you know, have issues with a house and we need to, you know, get inside the house, if someone files an appeal, and, you know, they, they want us to come inside the house, we are absolutely open to business as far as-
Yes.
-as far as doing inspections. And we are going to continue-
If anyone calls, we are accommodating.
Right.
Yes.
Having said that, as far as, as, you know, aside from that, if you call the office, if you don't call the office, aside from that, at some point over a four-year period, we're going to be knocking on the door. We, we're going to lay out a strategy that Angela and I are going to go over. And, you know, we're going to put, break the town up into four parts. And we're going to put block and lots in each part and tag a year to it. And that will be our strategy going forward. And Angela, somebody wants to call her probably in three or four weeks from now and say, hey, I'm block one, lot one, what, what year am I slated on? She could tell you, you know, we're going to, we're going to come around that neighborhood probably in two years from now. If you get done now, you're good to go for another four years.
Okay, good. So before I open it up to the council, and then we're going to open up in public comment, and there may be questions on this, is there anything else that, that you want to share with us about it? No? Okay. And thank you. Thank you both. So I would open up, we're going to go to public comment, but I just want to be fair to, to our council, whether you have any questions or comments before we go to public comment.
I just want to say thank you very much. That was very clear. And I think I, you know, everybody on the call tonight has a really good understanding of everything, the way you explained it. So thanks for the explanations, both of you.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else? Any other council members wish to ask any questions? Any comments?
Yeah, like Amy, I would just like to thank Angela and Rick both for their time this evening and helping to clarify everything for everyone on the call.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay. So now, we're going to move to public comment on agenda items only. So this is on the agenda, plus everything else that we went through the work session. So at this point, I would open the meeting up to the public for anyone who wishes to be heard on agenda items only.
Yeah, Bernstein?
Yes.
This is Frank Anello. I live in the townhouses in Rio Vista. I'd like to speak to some of the issues that Rick brought up about the process. On December the 9th, there was a form attached to my front door stating that a representative was there, you know, and in the exterior of the townhouses, and that they wanted to set up an interior. I called the company, basically because some of the information on the form that was left was concerning to me. Rick touched on some of those issues that I guess occurred. I did set up a Zoom meeting with a representative about six days later. And we were able to conduct that so we could do an interior review of the townhouse. One of my concerns is I, this is, I'm entering my 17th year in Allendale now. I believe this is like the third or fourth time I have gone through this process. Each time, we've had, you know, representatives from the appraisal companies come in and look. This time though, the representative was taking pictures as we were going through the Zoom call. One of my concerns is, how do I, as the homeowner, prove that a kitchen cabinet or a bathroom that existed when I moved into this unit is the same as it is today? You know, if I made an improvement or I did something significant to the unit, I have to get a permit to do that work. But I have no way of proving that those kitchen cabinets were the ones when I moved in. So I, I would like someone to maybe speak to that. Also, I didn't realize that I didn't have to get someone in the house this quickly. You know, because I know a lot of the unit owners around me said, you know, don't let anybody in. I said, well, I don't see why you can't let anybody in. You know, and I thought the Zoom thing was a real good benefit from Rick's company. The other thing I would like to find out is, when I get that evaluation, evaluation letter in the next two to three weeks, will I know, based on that valuation, what my tax rate is going to be? Because my, my taxes went up about 10% last year without any significant change in the valuation. So I'm a little confused as to what, you know, this letter is actually going to tell me, or do I have to wait until I get next year's tax assessment and the value? I know I threw a lot of questions out, but I would appreciate if you could talk to some of them. Thank you.
Certainly. And I'm, I'm going to let Rick, Rick answer.
Okay. So that, that's a good question. And before you heard me say that we put a lot of good information on the website and make available to the taxpayers, I talked about a tax impact calculator. Okay. What that is, is we will have the new total assessed aggregate when we send the letters out. And we essentially divide that into last year's total assessable aggregate. And that gives you a factor. That factor is then divided into the last year's tax rate, and it essentially gives you a new tax rate. Now, we always put an asterisk next to that and caution that that new tax rate is based on last year's budget. We don't know what the budget will be in 2021. We don't know what the school budget, county, or municipal budget will be. That's being worked on right now. So we tell people, here's what your tax rate would be if the budget stayed low, or we used last year's budget.
I understand.
So take that into account. And if you want to take that tax rate, and we give you a calculator, which you can just plug in your new assessment, and your old assessment, and the last year's tax rate, and this new estimated tax rate, and it'll, it'll shoot out the answer right away for you. It'll let you know, did your taxes go up, down, stay the same. Again, with that question that maybe you might want to add two or three or 4% to it, because, you know, we know that the budget's most likely going to go up.
Rick, let, let me ask you something. We, you know, we, I, I understand the impact that residential has gone up, you know, especially with COVID and people moving from the city and wanting, you know, a place where they can hang out with their family. I, I have noticed significantly, especially over the last year, that single-family residential homes have gone up significantly, whereas townhouses, condos here have not. And over the last five years, townhouses in general have gone either flat or down. Will your company make that distinction between a townhouse condo versus a single-family home for valuation?
Absolutely. And that's what I was talking about. It, you know, we, we know there's a, a big difference in the market right now between residential and commercial. But there's also a big difference within the residential, condos versus single-family, higher-end, single-family versus lower-end, single-family, neighborhood by neighborhood. We have the whole-
A differentiation between the different condominium complexes. We have to make that-
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, I agree, Angela, because some of them have amenities we do not, for example. You know, so I, I, I do appreciate, you know, you guys making that distinction.
I, I want to answer your first question though, because it was a good question, where you spoke about the interpretation of your kitchen and your cabinets.
Right.
I don't know your house, and I don't know, I don't have access to your card right now. But I will tell you that when you get your value letter, look at the reverse side. And that will, that will list how, how your kitchen was, was, was seen by, by the appraiser. And so if there's an issue, that's, that's when you pick up the phone and you give us a call, and you have that same explanation, you know, okay, you put me down for an updated kitchen. I don't have an updated kitchen. That's where that dialogue starts. And that's why, you know, I want to be as transparent as possible and show everybody right at the onset what we put them down for. Especially in light of, of this, you know, confusion with interior, exterior. That's where we want to just put it out there and make sure that, give everyone in the borough the assurance that that value that's on that letter is based on accurate information on that.
Okay. No, Rick, I, I appreciate that. And, and what prompted the whole, you know, request by me to have someone come in as quickly as possible, and then I'll, I'll let it go, Mayor. I know. I'm sorry, I'm taking up a lot of time.
Frank, I appreciate your input and your comment. Don't, you don't have to cut it short. I, I, this is why, this is why we do this. So-
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. You know, I just give a quick example. They had four bathrooms listed. So when I called your office, they said, yes, we have you down for four, and they're four full bathrooms. Well, I don't have four full. I have two and two. So your point, Rick, earlier about, you know, the office may not have had the exact information on every single house, okay? The inspection actually clarified that. So the Zoom, the Zoom inspection was a real benefit to me. But then, you know, to the point about the kitchen, I started realizing, well, how do I know what you had down for me, you know, over the last three appraisers, you know? So that's it. I'm done. Thank you very much. I thank all of you for all your time and effort in this.
And thank you. A couple of things. One, just give us your address for the record.
It's 5454 Rio Vista Drive.
Rio Vista Drive. Good. Good. Thank you for that. Number two, 17 years in Allendale. Thank you for, for that. We, we appreciate-
Oh, I love it here. I'm a 20-year, a former 20-year resident, Ridgewood. Unfortunately, I started having health issues after 9/11. 30-year, 30-year Financial Services for Merrill Lynch, I had to retire early, moved here, and I only wish I would have moved here even earlier. But thank you.
You're great. And, and, and we appreciate you coming. We appreciate you coming to the meeting. And we appreciate, you know, you, you speaking. And thank you, you know, you got the card and you called for the inspection. So we couldn't ask for more. So thank you very much.
Okay.
I'd like to open the, continue, it's an open meeting to the public. Anyone else wish to be heard?
No question. Oh, sorry. Okay, you can go first.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is Chuck Totozian, members of the council. I, I just wanted to say that I am looking forward to working on the new Borough Hall project. I, I really feel that this is going to be a great project for Allendale. And I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity.
Great, Chuck. And thank you. And I don't know if you heard during, during the work session, we were all singing your, your praise. There's a resolution in the consent agenda to appoint you, and we're all, we're all thrilled to have you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm happy to be part of the team.
Thanks, Chuck.
And Chuck, what is your address for the record?
66 Mallinson Street.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You as well. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard during this time?
A question, if I may, please.
Certainly.
Early here. Good evening, everybody. Question about the assessment process. There was some discussion earlier about the spike in, in home values and whether it's wise to conduct assessments at this time. And I, I think I understood from the response that because it's an annual process and will be done regularly, it, it would be a fair process. Where, where I get stuck a little bit is the issue there where 25% of the homes this year, only 25% of them would be subject to an interior inspection. I'm curious to know, to what degree does the interior inspection influence the, the valuation process? And if it influences it in a way that, you know, those homes might be more prone to a higher assessment, how, how does that play out, you know, against the idea of dealing with the recent spike in values and any fluctuations that might occur subsequently?
It's a great question. All right. Rick or Angela?
So, so it is a good question. And we, we've spent a lot of time talking about interior inspections and data from inside the house. And I, I don't want to minimize the importance of getting accurate information inside updated kitchens, bathrooms, et cetera. But big picture, it's the, the value that we put on a property, first and foremost, most of the value in, in, in almost all of Burton County towns is on the land. So when we do an exterior inspection, they do a site inspection, and they look at your land. Land value accounts for more than 50% in a lot of cases in, in, in the borough. And then the exterior inspection, which is the actual measurement of the dwelling from the outside, which calculates the square footage, and the determination from the outside of the quality and condition of the structure that's there, and the improvement accessory buildings is secondary to the land. So when you get to the, the, the accounting of bathrooms- So when you get to the, the, the accounting of bathrooms and updated kitchen and bathrooms, again, while it's important for accuracy. Most of the value has already been picked up on the site inspection and the exterior inspection.
Great. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Also, just to be clear, it is 25% each year going forward. Right, Rick?
Yeah. But again, 100% of, and this gets confused a lot, 100% of the town will be valued based on current market data each and every year. This 25% only applies to the, the verification of, of objective data via the inspection.
Right. Okay. So, good. So 100% of the exterior, 100% of the value every year, and rolling 25% interior. Rick, Rick Shirley, if you could just give me your, your address for the record so we can put it into the minutes.
Oh, 134 Powell.
Great. Okay, thank you. And I hope the explanation and the answer was, was helpful and responsive. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Yes, please. Mayor Barra, it's Liz White, 26 East Crescent Avenue.
Mayor Emeritus Liz White, pleasure to have you.
Hi, Angela. A couple of quick questions for you. The, did the county request this reassessment? Angela, you're muted.
The county was going to order a reassessment, a revaluation, and we suggested this annual program because we felt it would be beneficial.
Okay, great. What, what was our, what was our percentage with the county? What were we at?
Our ratio, although our ratio was in the high 90s, our coefficient, the disparity between the classes was becoming greater than 10%.
Okay, so, so our ra, our ratio was in the low 90s. Okay. And Rick, question for you. How many field inspectors did you have in Allendale?
I believe at one time we had as many as four, but it kind of varied throughout, and one commercial inspector. So five total.
All right. So the miscommunication was with four people then in terms of all of those people who did speak to them and were told that they did not need to come into the house?
I, I think I kind of pinned it down on one particular field inspector who was probably not, was miscommunicating, I think. I, I can't, I wasn't there. I don't know exactly what was said.
It's okay. That's fine. I was just, I was just trying to figure out how many people were involved. That's all. Thank you. Okay. And the, the other question, now you said the, the evaluations will be as of October of 2020, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if my exterior was reviewed on December 31st, that was my New Year's present. Thank you, Rick. If my, if my exterior was appraised on December 31st, how does that factor in?
So, so the October 1st, that's essentially the valuation date, meaning that we can only analyze data and sales up to October 1st.
Okay, so it's only, it's only data and sales. It's not the individual property, correct?
Yeah. So, so I do appraisal. So for example, if I get hired to do an appraisal for an estate. It's the date of death. That might be a year prior, two years prior. In this particular case, in a reassessment, it's always October 1 of the pre-tax year.
Gotcha. Okay, great. And what other towns are you currently working with to do these revals right now?
We're, we're up to at least about over 20, about two dozen towns are, it, it seems to me the trend going forward.
I know. Angela, Angela tried for years and years. Unfortunately, she had a, she tried to get us to do this for a very long time. So I, I'm, I'm not surprised you're doing it. I just, I wasn't sure, you know, how many towns you were working with and how you were managing with all of those towns through this process. So, great. Thanks very much for your time.
Yeah, Mayor, on that note, I can, I can certainly supply, I think I might have even already supplied statistics of other towns that have been doing this for more than five years. And in, in every case, 100% of the towns I'm working in, the statistics speak for themselves as to the benefit of the program.
Great. Okay, thanks very much. I appreciate your time tonight.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard during the public comment portion on agenda items?
Hi, Mayor. This is John Carroll speaking. I live at 80 Brookside Ave.
Great. How are you tonight?
I'm doing well. I appreciate this open forum and Angela and Rick giving us some of their time and going through this to explain it further. My question is, well, my concern is that I, I have a issue with the data. And there's been a lot of talk about fair evaluations and ensuring that there's fair property value. But when I had, with the card that I received, I had an inspector come out to my house. They, it was only done on the outside. But the card that I received had a bunch of notations on it about the interior. So that's one question that I have. And I'm hoping that you could speak to that a little bit, and then maybe I'll go into some of the other questions that I had. It says that I haven't finished.
So, Rick, if you could, if you could.
Yes. So the car that we left it. Yeah, so that, that, that would have been the car, the door sticker that we left. And it did have some information there. And, you know, the idea is to, you know, start the communication process with the homeowner as to, you know, letting them know we were there. We did do the exterior. We do want to get inside. Here's what we have so far, and let's take it from here. And so, and that's where it kind of got a little botched up in that, you know, there was an understanding that, well, we don't need to get in. You know, we want to get, our, our goal here is to get the information correct. That's our goal here. And so that's why I think it's important for each of the residents to look at the information on the back of the value letter to make sure that the information is correct. And if it's incorrect, you got to call us and we'll take it from there.
I understand that, but I just don't understand how you can have an interior inspection, and I was here, and then come inside. And then you can make statements on the card and the appraisal, you know, form. I get that it's not final, but it seems malicious to be making, you know, assumptions before even being inside. And most of the assumptions on here, you know, are not, are not true. And you have no, there was no fact to back it up. It says, I have a finished basement. That's not true. You know, and so that's the, that's the issue when we're talking about data and ensuring that it's a fair evaluation. So far, what's been done has been the opposite of that to me, at least.
If I could, if I might just respond to that. In fairness to Rick's inspector, they have my property record card, which my data might not be correct. So that's the whole point of this is to verify the data. That's what they have. I'll be happy if he'd like to give me a call tomorrow. I'll be happy to go over what I have and have obtained maybe throughout the years on your particular property. I'll be happy to go over that. It could be that the last time we did a revaluation or a reassessment program, we didn't get in, and it's an estimate. And rather than further continuing the mistake or error, I'll be happy to correct it.
Right. So, so, and, and I want to speak to Mr. Carroll's point. So I think he's referring to this that I had, right? And so, right, and it says, if no interior inspection is conducted, the following information will be recorded. And it goes into bedroom units and baths and condition. And so it, this presumably was, was taken, Angela, from, from your card, from the information that you might have at Borough Hall.
His tablet is loaded with my data. Yes.
Okay, so it's not the malicious person looking in the window saying, hey, it looks like it's probably this or that. They're taking the data, right? So, so John, right?
Understood. That makes more sense. And I appreciate the.
It's not someone out there trying to be malicious. Okay.
I, I worded it, you know, maybe misappropriately. But it, you know, I appreciate the clarification on it. One of the other things I had was I purchased my home in 2018. And my taxes were raised that year versus the previous year. I was told it was reassessed. Granted, I didn't live here at the time, but was that, was that the municipality or Bergen County? Or can anyone speak to that?
I don't have your file in front of me. We didn't do a reassessment in 2018 unless there was work that was done to the home prior to you purchasing it. But, you know, I'd be happy to take a look at it and get back to you if you'd like to give the office a call tomorrow.
Okay, I can, I can definitely do that. I appreciate it. And the last question that I had was with regarding the 25%, a couple of other people had brought it up, and the accuracy of it. I believe that Rick had said it's from 2000, you know, October 2019 to October 2020 was the period that they were going to be looking at. And then the observations of the properties on an ongoing basis, but it will be basically 25% a year. If, if the objective is accuracy of data, why not create a longer look back period to flatten out the difference in property valuations based on the spike in real estate that we're seeing right now? Which should also offset the 25% that could potentially be skewed based on a limited data set in town.
We, we actually do do that. That's a good, good question. Point. I, I, we put most of our emphasis on sales that occur the year of leading up to October 1. Remember, we are statutorily required to value the as-is value as of October 1. So it goes without saying that any sales that occur leading up to October 1 would be weighted more heavily than, say, in 19 or in 18. But we still look at 18 and 19 in order to figure out a trend. But what I was talking about with the anomalies of this summer was Angela and I have been, you know, plotting the sales over the last three years, and there has been a steady rise. If one or two or three months within that three year, in this case, July, August, and September of 19, you just see a spike on the chart. You have to take a good, close look at that. And so I, I, I'm not just going to react to sales that took place in September and August, even though they, they are close to that October 1. Because I think that, that those were truly sales that were, I call them COVID sales at this point. You know, those are truly sales that took place of people looking for a home while the pandemic is happening. So, so we're going to take all that into consideration. And, and I give the assurance to, to everyone that I'm not, that Angela and I talked about this. We're not just going to look at, you know, maybe a dozen sales that were off the chart, you know, high in, in, in August of 2020 and set the entire model based on those sales.
Great. Thank you. And, and, and thank you for the question, very astute questions. And Rick and Angela, thank you for those answers. John, anything else?
No, I believe that that's it. I appreciate your, your answers tonight and the clarification on them. Thank you.
Great. And thank you. I appreciate the questions. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard on any agenda?
Yes, our caduceus command. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, so just give us the spelling of your name and your address.
You can see actually the spelling and of the name when I'm speaking. That's the best. Unless, well, we can spend some time on spelling. The address is 125 Myrtle Avenue.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And what is your question?
So two disparate questions. So first question, when Frank was speaking, he mentioned that the Zoom is done and pictures are taken. My question is, so, so I, I wasn't aware that actually it's, let's say the Zoom will be recorded or the image is taken off my insight. I have some, you know, you know, concerns from privacy perspective of, you know, recording the information of what my insight looks like. I wouldn't like this to be shared outside. I would even probably choose to have an in-person visit as long as no pictures are taken. Because, you know, nowadays we hear, you know, information is stored, information is stolen. And so from that perspective, is then an option of not having recordings? If not, then I would like to understand how the data is protected. What's your, you know, password rotation? Who has access to it? How you're securing it? What's your encryption? I hope you're using encryption, and I hope you're not storing it on your servers that somebody just can carry out, et cetera.
Great. And, and thank you. So, Rick, can you please speak to that, to the concern over privacy, over taking pictures or videos of the interior of their home?
Yeah. So, so on a Zoom inspection, if, if there was a picture taken, it would be of some, it would be of some item that was unique and lend itself to, to valuation. I, I wasn't even, I wasn't even sure you could take a picture on a, on a Zoom inspection. But I guess, you know, technology allows it. But that's not our, that's not our typical procedure. We normally, we just do the inspection and, and notate what we visually see. And it's surprising to hear that, that pictures were taken on kitchen cabinets. I, it's the first I'm hearing of that. But of course, if a picture is.
Rick, Rick, if I, Rick, just let me jump in. As I held the iPad up to the cabinets and the bathrooms, et cetera. The representative had her iPhone and would snap a picture that way.
Oh, I understand. Gotcha. Okay, I see. All right.
Just clarify that.
Yeah. Okay, so again, I give the assurance that any pictures taken, you know, it's the property of, of the assessor Angela. And my guess is that, you know, you don't share that with anyone other than the homeowner and yourself, correct? Angela?
I, I do not. I, I don't even have interior photos except in tax court reports. That's it.
So is it possible to decline the, the recording of my interior? I'm, I'm okay with, you know, somebody looking, taking a look at it, Zoom in person, doesn't matter. I wouldn't want.
I, I don't believe anything's really been recorded.
Right. Rick, i- i- if we can, I mean, as to what was done and, and what, what may have been done, Rick, if we could just, it could, you put into the policy and speak to, to your inspectors that only, only photos will be done at the consent of the homeowner. So only if the homeowner consents to provide any photos. Other than that, there'll be no photos taken.
Understood.
Okay. So is that, so that's a policy that, that you can convey to, to your inspectors, right?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Great. Thank you very much. And, and a, a different question, which is totally different in nature. I was just wondering how, because when I look at my property tax, I see there is a county portion. How does the county actually, that is more educational, how do they calculate our taxes? So here, the, the perspective is, is it based on the value? Or is there like a pool of money that Allendale has to give to Bergen County?
So I, I'm almost tempted to, to take that, that's not really, and, and it's a great question. And, but I would, I would think in terms of how the county tax is derived, if you, if you want to call our CFO, listen there. Angela might be able to speak to it. But I would just, in, in the spirit of what this is for, let's table that for a different day.
Okay. So, so maybe I'll, I'll just, just, just explain why I asked this question. And, you know, we don't have to answer, answer this question if it's out of the scope of this discussion. So here is the assumption. So here is, the assumption is that we're almost, you know, we're 90% close to, to property, to, to real value when it comes to assessments. And, you know, I know that because I lived in other towns, I have relatives living in our towns. There, there are nowhere close to 100% most of the towns. We're actually leading. If we will stay at that level, which is good, great. But other towns in Bergen County do not and we're assessed at the, and county assesses us based on our values. It means that Allen Dale will be contributing more than other towns if it's best based on the value. Because we'll be always there at the forefront, forefront, at the bleeding edge and we'll be paying top dollar to Bergen County. That, that was my perspective.
Right, and, and I appreciate that. And in terms of gripes with what we have to pay to the county, I'm sure Mayor Emeritus Liz White would be happy to chime in and speak volume, volumes to that. I've, I've heard, I've heard her speak to that many times. So, but I, I appreciate the question, not, not the proper forum for it here, but you're, we're happy to offline or another time speak to that. Great, anyone else wish to be heard from the public?
Ari, it's Jackie McSwigan. I just have a quick question. I live at 70 Greenway. Can you just tell me when the last assessment, townwide assessment was made, what year that was?
The last full revale, I believe, was in 2012 and I believe we made an adjustment in 15.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, thanks very much. Thanks for all this great information tonight. I appreciate it.
Great, thank you. And I have lost, okay, there we go. Anyone else from the public? Okay, so we're gonna close the meeting to the public. Rick and Angela, I want to thank you for, for, for all of your help this week. You've been essential for all of the work. And, and thank you for, from, from all of us. I will now close the meeting to the public. At this time, we open it up one last time. And. We go to introduction of ordinances, 21-01, which I discussed in the work session. I would request the council member to make the motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance 21-01. And set the hearing for February 25th, 2021 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Michelle, please read the title of the ordinances and conduct a roll call.
Here, this is ordinance 21-01, an ordinance of the borough of Allendale, Bergen County, New Jersey. Amending and modifying chapter 231 Stormwater Control, Article 1, General Regulations of the Borough of Allendale.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Stroud.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski.
Yes.
Great, thank you. We're gonna go to the consent agenda before, I just also, I know we kind of deviated somewhat from the script and it wasn't to make it a public forum. On this, but I thank you for everyone for indulging us on this. I think there were questions that were raised. And this just seemed to be the, the best forum to answer them. So thanks for everyone for helping, agreeing to modify the schedule. The agenda. We are now consent agenda, which I went through in the work session. I would request a motion to approve, approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Stroud.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Go back to committee reports. Councilwoman Wosinski, would you like to give your report?
Sure. So 220, 230, we came to an agreement with our insurance company, so they are going to be paying for a portion of our remediation. So we are able to continue that and we actually went in there today and hopefully we'll be finishing up in the next couple of weeks. We also have filed a claim against the initial environmental company, so we'll be following up with that. And we also have grants submitted for the cleanup to the DEP and that is also a constant follow-up daily to, to get some updates on that. We are now starting to number crunch, so it's great that Chuck's on board with us. And we have a big meeting tomorrow, our all-hands meeting with Hampshire, who is our potential developer. And we're going to go through all of our documents to see what we, we, we need to push this closing through. We had a facilities meeting this morning about 13 hours ago, exactly. And we talked about Crestwood already and our playground's going in. We've, we've talked with alley youth. We have bands coming in, camps are starting to call, so we're actually gearing up for Crestwood. Our streetscape is, is the, the first three phases are, are, are almost complete, but there's a lot of extra finishing things that we need to, to clear up before they move on. And also actually, Councilwoman Holman and I met with a Girl Scout troop today and we're trying to rear them in and get them to join the council in another. I don't know, 20 years, but they were all super, super enthused and they really wanted to do civic duty. They talked about changing. Speed limits and they had, they had big plans for Allendale, so it was kind of fun. And I, you'll probably say this in your report, Ari, but I wanted to just say thanks to the library. That was a great presentation that they put on about COVID. And I just wanted to shout out to Liz Holman for all the work that she's doing on water. Water is so important and Allendale's got some really tough decisions to make. And we all really, really need to dig deep and, and learn all about all of the PFosses and everything else that's going on with our, with our water. So I'm looking forward to her presentation today. I mean, I really think that water is just so important and it's one of those things that you don't realize until you don't, you don't, until you don't have it. So thank you, Liz, for all of that. And also I just really want to say thank you to Steve because he is the person that loves to actually go through all our old ordinances. And all of our old codes, I should say, and make sure that they're all up to speed. And there's really nobody else that likes to do that except Steve, so. So thank you, Steve, for taking on that task for the borough because it really should be a living document. Because everything constantly changes, so. So thank you for doing that because that is just something I would never like to do.
My pleasure. I should have been a land use attorney, but that ship has sailed.
It's never too late.
Oh, yeah, it is now.
All right, that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Councilman O'Toole.
Yes, sir. In addition to our regular meeting, which we had this evening, the administration, finance and HR committees had a few calls since we last met. Discussing various matters, including the reassessment that's ongoing and the letter sent to the residents. This evening, we discussed, as usual, the budget, which we continue to work on and seek creative ways to do more with less. And continue to pare down and get to where we think will be the best. We also discussed some upcoming personnel matters. About it for now. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Councilman Stroud. Do you like to give your report?
Mayor Bernstein, before I start my DPW report, I wanted to thank Councilman O'Connell for mentioning the double masking that's now being recommended. You know, my safety triangle is mask, social distance and hand washing. So when I heard about the double masking, I tried it and it was actually a very easy conversion. And in some ways I find that the mask stays on my face a little better, having the surgical mask first and then the cloth mask over the surgical mask. It, it was an easy switch over and I highly recommend it to everybody and it just greatly increases the reduction of the risk of the spread. With regard to the DPW, my, my, you know, my, my committee. The, since our last council meeting, we've had three snowstorms. The most significant was the February 1st storm where we got a good two-foot dump. You know, that put a lot of stress on the, on the DPW team to get it cleaned up. And it even required a follow-up on Friday after 8 o'clock. We moved a bunch of snow that had been pushed out of the downtown area. We got it relocated so that when we get more snow, we have a place to plow it. And, and of course, th- th- these kind of storms put a lot of stress on the machines, so the DPW crew's been, you know, keeping everything running. And of course, we use a lot of salt, so we're, we're, we're working with the county to make sure we're always properly stocked. And I think as always, Allendale's done a great job keeping the roads clean, so I want to thank the DPW committee for that. And as Amy mentioned, believe it or not, we are getting ready for Crestwood, you know, a couple of the pumps that, that fill the lake and need to be replaced. And, you know, it's, the DPW keeps clicking along and, and looking forward even when it's, you know, working overtime to keep the roads clear. And I'm not going to steal the thunder of Mark Savistano because he's, he was on, maybe he's left. So the, the green team, which I'm resurrecting with Mark Savistano, Carlton Frost and Ed O'Connell. And thank you again, Amy Wosinski, for all those years on the green team. We, we're bringing it back. The, the real impetus was the Styrofoam, adding Styrofoam to our recycling stream. That Mark Savistano is championing and Carlton Frost and Ed and I are, you know, fully behind them. So. Mark has been in contact with the Bergen County hub of the green teams of Bergen County, which are all part of the Sustainable New Jersey Program. And the. Mark is excited to have met the Fair Lawn Green Team and Fair Lawn is looking to possibly locate a Styrofoam condensing machine. Which would replace the need for these, you know, once a month or once a quarter. Collection drives where people drop off their Styrofoam at a collection point. Once we get one or two of these Styrofoam condensing machines, then you just bring your Styrofoam there. They condense it and it enters the recycling stream and actually has value. So it's too bad that Mark wasn't able to stick through because I did see him earlier. I'm sure he'll give us an update on the next council report. But look forward to future accomplishments from the Allendale Green Team in the coming months. And I'll end my report there, Mayor Bernstein.
Great, thank you very much, Councilman Stroud. I will give my report, which a lot of it has been covered, so I'll just. Hit the, the highlights. The winter storms. We've had almost three feet of snow already. Huge thank you to DPW led by Ron Kistner and Crew Chief Dan Richards for their hard work in cleaning the streets. Clearing our downtown and getting Allendale back up and running. I'm always impressed by the dedication of the DPW employees, especially at times like these. As well as our first responders. Ron, thank you for everything you, you do and, and, and all of your men.
My guys get the credit really good. Dan Richardson, the guys.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll let the guys know.
Yeah, please do. COVID, we are hard to believe, we're just about one year shy of seeing the impact of COVID-19. So it's incredible to think, you know, where has this year gone? We are fortunately seeing the quote-unquote light at the end of the tunnel with the rollout of the vaccines. The rollout has been a lot slower and a little more torturous or tortured or painful than we would have hoped. We, there's still, there are a lot of people in the 1A category who are still waiting to get it and they can't get through. Our OEM department continues to weekly monitor the situation with Police Officer Commander Mike Dillon. He's doing a great job navigating, stewarding the OEM department and the borough through the process. I put it in my portion of the monthly what's happening. We reached out to the county on two occasions, the county and the state. To inquire as to whether or not we could be a distribution site for, for, for the vaccine. The county, both neither the county nor the state was in a position to accept our offer, not because they didn't want to, but just there's not enough. Supply to meet the, the, the demand. So they, they said, you know, call back, contact us in another week, et cetera. When, when, when the supply reaches the, meets up with the demand and they have some, we're going to find out whether or not we can be a distribution site. Secondly, we are also looking in to see whether or not, once people could actively get onto the, to the websites and register, we want to help the seniors. And maybe doing something at the library or elsewhere where we could invite the seniors in at designated times or get their information to help sign them up. So we are aware and I have been contacted by, I'm sure other council members have been contacted by seniors or people who, who can't navigate through the system and can't get the, the appointments. And we are aware of that. We're trying to get them either a site here in Allendale or help navigate them through the process. We will keep you posted on that. Please know that we're trying. In our latest issue of the newsletter, the Board of Health summarized some of those, provide links to vaccine, vaccine distribution locations with registration information. So you can go to our newsletter, which can be act, which can be reached through our website and you can go to the Board of Health portion, which has links to vaccine distribution locations. Again, thank you to Communications Director John Gill and Webmaster Tyler Accarino for spearheading the effort on our borough website. Much needed. We're much looking forward to it. Thank you for all of your help there. We are, it mentioned during the regular session, we are, we're on the subject of technology. We're hopeful that our next meeting will be proceeding with a new phone system at the borough. And the new system will bring an upgrade in service and reliability and drumroll at a cost savings. So thank you to everyone who's been working hard to make this happen. Wellcore's Mental Health Grant. And thanks to Councilwoman Holman, I will get to that part. Hardships of the past year have brought much-needed attention to mental health issues, particularly in our youth. Recently, I submitted a letter in support of a grant application for Wellcore's Mental Health Awareness Training Program. Wellcore will be working with the USRA Coalition, of which we are a part, to train others on how to appropriately and safely respond to individuals with mental disorders. Particularly individuals with serious mental illness and/or serious emotional disturbances and approve coordination of services for those individuals. Hopefully this grant will be approved and thank you to Mayor Minichetti of the USR and our own Councilwoman Liz Holman for spearheading this. And lastly, what Amy had mentioned, the Buckles COVID presentation. I was thrilled to attend. On Monday, there was a must-see, a library-sponsored program and it was, it was must-see. There were, I think, 100 people on the Zoom meeting. Infectious Disease Specialist Eric Granowitz. Important to note, graduate of Hillside School, Brookside School in Northern Highlands. So our own Dr. Eric Granowitz, son of Sheila and Jack Granowitz, he gave what was an amazing presentation for an hour, riveting. It was on point, it was topical, it, then he fielded questions for about a half an hour. So sponsored by the library, Patty Dursow helped lead it. Nadine Benoit, Board of Health, was the MC or, or, or she guided it and she helped with the questions. So to the library, to Nadine, to Patty and particularly to Dr. Granowitz, thank you for bringing that to Allendale and beyond. And that is the end of my mayor's report. Ray Wiss, Borough Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Apropos your comments on COVID, I just looking at an article online that indicates that 100 million doses of vaccine that were scheduled to be delivered in June. Will now be delivered in May and that Pfizer and Moderna have each pledged, or the federal government has actually purchased 100 million more doses from each that will be available in June. So hopefully those 300 billion doses get to New Jersey and to Bergen County and even more locally. But I think that is a positive sign. Otherwise, between the, the Police Committee, the Water Committee and the 220, 230 Committee, in the two weeks since our last meeting, I feel like it's one big Zoom conference. That's all for now, man.
All right, thank you. Ray will be performing all week.
And we appreciate it, Ray.
And, and, and don't forget to tip your waitresses. Michelle?
The Clerk's Office is just busy processing pet licenses. Uh, the clerk's office is just busy processing pet licenses and, um, fielding calls, and, and trying to assist the residents.
Great, thank you. You've been doing a wonderful job, as much as you don't want to hear it. I know, the whole team, but it, the whole team, everyone is doing a great job. Mr. Kistner?
I'm, I'm actually gonna have a reply. Do have to comment. Yeah, it's my honor to be both the Director of Operations of the DPD and the Administrator Officer for this great community. Could not do with this team, and they really got to be recognized. I give you credit for snow removal. But honestly, I, I, I make coffee for the guys. Dan Richards, I, I'm the bag over, the donut runner. Dan Richards, uh, Crew Chief, has stepped up. The guys work well with him. When he's not out with the guys, with the loader moving the snow, he's fixing the machines. He just gets a lot of credit. I want to give local landscaper Mark Force credit, his group worked with our crew last Friday to remove the snow from the downtown shopping area for Friday night, so the, the street, you know, downtown shopping was open Saturday. Great job there. Wearing the two hats and being busy with the, a lot of the DPW stuff. Michelle, Tatiana, and John, um, they're the clerk there, but they go out of their way to help me. You know, we have work relationship and a friendship from the past, and, uh, they have to be recognized. They've done a great job. In the building department, our, our former assistant in the building department left before the holidays on, uh, on short notice. Linda Garapola, who was our land use administrator assistant, came down, works with Anthony Hacker, our building department. We haven't missed a beat, permits have increased. And again, just the effort is there. Couple of them I have to recognize, because it really is, you know, they're not borough employees, but they treat the borough like it's theirs. You, a lot of everybody knows is Jonesy, David Jones, who's the lead driver for Suburban, our garbage. He kept, he, he had Mr. Rizel, he kept us informed when we could, when we were going to be closed, when we were going to be able to pick, pick up, pick up some mist. He, he stays in touch with Tatiana. They get out there, before it even gets to me, you know, I, I, I get the thank yous, but they've already addressed it. It, it's great help. And finally, I got to thank Mr. Wiss, there's been a lot of personnel issues, which you guys are going to be discussing in close, which is also, I've been involved with, and some other issues. And, uh, it's just not nine to five. If I, you know, as long as Rutgers isn't on, playing basketball, he answers. I mean, you know, a lot happens at 10 o'clock. I hate guys, I hate people when they do that to me at 10 o'clock at night.
Sorry.
He takes my call, you know, I consider him out. We're lucky, bless him. Really great attorney, probably doesn't raise his rates, but he really treats it kind of like it's all, and sure, he's got to be recognized for it.
Oh, he does.
He goes beyond the, you know, I'm the Borough Attorney, you know, he actually comes up with some ideas. And, uh, I really do appreciate, I just want to say publicly, it's a great team. Thank you.
Right, Ron, thank you. And, um, I agree, and sorry about the, the 10:00 PM texts and calls. You didn't have to show me up right in the middle of everyone.
Yeah, he used me to throw shade on you.
That's for the minute, that's key.
Mayor, if I may cut in?
Yes, sure, certainly.
You know what, and Ron's being modest, and he's going to be mad at me tomorrow, but, uh, this is, uh, mostly part of the team that Ron put together. So, uh, I appreciate the team he put together. It's all about Allen Dale, and it's all about being a team. Just want to let Ron know that.
No, it, great, yeah.
I'll, I'll see you tomorrow.
That's right, yeah, no, Councilman O'Connell, you're, you're spot on, you know, he, it's a great team. And look, and there's, there's family. We've said it before, when, you know, that we, we feel like family, and we spend more time with, you know, with these people. But yeah, the people who go above and beyond, you know, the people where, you know, no one, the, the people mentioned by Ron, and the people who've given the reports, no one's punching a clock. This is not nine to five, or 8:45 to 4:30 to any of these people. So we are blessed to have you all. Thank you very much. Um, I don't, Lisa is not on, so I'm not going to give, uh, go to her. So now I'm going to open the floor to the public for comment on any item at all. If there's anyone from the public still listening now, and you have something to say? Not seeing anyone. So we're, the general public, you guys are pretty much done, but, uh, council, I'm sorry, you're not done. We, uh, we have closed session, so, and for those that are not part of, uh, the council, you can leave. Once we close here, we're not going to end the meeting, but when we come back, all we're going to do is get back on, and then we're going to close the meeting. And in the closed session, we're not going to, um, transact any business. No business will be performed. So, uh, no decisions will be met, but just, it'll just be for discussion. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2186, which authorizes the governing body to enter into closed session under number one, attorney-client privilege for an update on Water Department deliberations and negotiations, and number two, update on personnel matter.
So moved. So moved, O'Connell?
Thank you. So that, Steve is first, Ed was second. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, the public should know, as stated by me, that the governing body will be entering into closed session, and will only reconvene to adjourn the meeting once the closed session portion is finished. No formal action will be taken. So now, procedurally, or just, uh, technologically, I'm going to close this, and we're going to go through-
There's a separate login.
There's a separate login through Zoom, that everyone was-
Through, through Zoom, so- Yes, so we're going to close off of this, and we'll-
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
On Zoom.
Yeah, I'm trying to get on, it says it's waiting. All right, yeah, bye.
Yeah, in, in like five minutes.
Two minutes.
Yeah, three minutes, 9:33.
That time.
9:33.
Okay, see you then.
The time is now 10:42, and regular session has been moved. I request motion to adjourn the regular session.
I get it.
Fall in favor, second?
Hi.
Yes, fall in favor? Great, thank you very much, everyone.
Nice.
All right, goodnight, everyone.